So that I'm not the one staff person who forgets to do that because I have a fear of that. So we're good started and it's good to, it's good to be with you. And about the PowerPoints, we can put those PowerPoints up on the website if you'd like to. If that's okay with you Bishop Tim.
Oh yeah, well, I guess I need to give it to somebody to do that then, right?
Send them my way, I'll get them up.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So am I on?
You're on.
All right, excellent. Well, again, welcome everybody and yep, we're up to 99. So we might break the 100 barrier again tonight, but it's good to, I mean, you know, I try to scroll through a little bit and just try to at least glance and see everybody. It's a find strength in knowing that we are able to be together for some Bible study in these really strange times. Couple of public service announcements, like any good show, right? You get some commercials. One is tomorrow begins early voting in North Carolina. So those of you who are in the state of North Carolina, who may go to an early voting place and it does not have to be your regular polling place. Now, of course, if you wait till the actual election day, you, you need to go to the particular polling place. So just a good and friendly, nonpartisan announcement and encouragement that part of our responsibility is particularly as Lutherans, as we understand the kingdom of the right hand, the kingdom of the left hand, which is really probably not the best description because the kingdom of the right hand, the reign of God encompasses the fullness of both and that works through government. But in a republic like ours, we have the opportunity in that governance to vote and it's part of our responsibility as our greater love of neighbor. So there's that announcement. The other piece, just as a little bit of interesting kind of trivia, since it's only a couple of weeks away, is on October 31st, which is Reformation Day and Halloween, and since it's 2020, a full moon, which will be the second full moon of the month, which makes it a blue moon. And before you go to bed that night, you need to turn your clocks back one hour. You fall back during fall because we all want that extra hour of 2020 to be able to, to enjoy in this particularly wonderful year. All right, so much for commercials, let's pray. Gracious God, you are with us in every moment. You surround us in ways that we cannot even begin to be aware and you surround all of your precious children. We ask for the grace to be able to pay attention and to notice, to be aware that you are indeed here and that we meet you and our neighbors, particularly those in need. We ask that you would transform us through this word that is a living word, that it is Christ who comes to us in this word, that we might better be the people that you intend for us to be. We pray for all those with special concerns and needs and loved ones, all those suffering with COVID. We pray for our leaders in our state and in our national government. And we pray for this election process, that you would help raise up leaders who will work your justice in the world. In the name of Christ, we ask, amen.
Amen.
So we, we enter a whole different part of the Gospel of Mark. Remember, you know, you can divide it up in lots of different ways. It's 16 chapters and the first eight chapters, nobody knows anything really at all about who Jesus is. Then Peter says, you're the Messiah. Now then we go into that little section that we've been on the last couple of weeks about, so okay, what does that mean? The three predictions, it means that I'm gonna die, I'm gonna rise again, and anybody who wants to follow me is going to die. And then you remember the absurdity that just mounted last week in those three passion predictions, that, you know, the disciples just look worse and worse going through there because soon as Jesus says whoever wants to be great has to be a servant, then the disciples say, oh, oh, when you come to the fullness of your kingdom, can I sit on the right hand and can I sit on the left and can we be in charge? Because we like being in charge. And Jesus is like, you, you didn't get that, did you? You know, so, you know, he keeps telling people and then they argue on the road, you know, who is the greatest? So it's just this whole progression of absurdity, beginning with Peter and then with James and John, and then with all the disciples. And then it brings us really to the, the healing of a blind Bartimaeus. And that gives us the transition because remember, Jesus has been traveling from way up north, now winding his way down south. And as far as we know, in the Gospel of Mark, Jesus has never been to Jerusalem. Now, it's possible that as a good Jew, he would have made a yearly pilgrimage to Jerusalem, but it's, we're never told that, like we are in the other Gospels. The Gospel of John, on the other hand, takes place mostly in Jerusalem. Yeah, tonight is chapters 11 and 12. Somebody'd ask in the chat bar for clarification on that. So then after this healing of blind Bartimaeus, then suddenly we get, we're in Jerusalem. We've, we've arrived there on the way. Jesus has been doing the same thing that he was doing in the first eight chapters for the, the next couple of chapters, and that is healing, lots and lots of healings and casting out demons. But we're basically mostly done with, with that. And it enters a large section of teaching. Please notice that one of the big pieces that Mark does not have, that Matthew and Luke have are some, some really big teaching pieces, namely the Sermon on the Mount, the sermon on the plain, P-L-A-I-N, in Luke, but the sermon on the mount in Matthew, where, where we get a lot of real clear stuff. And also remember that Mark doesn't give us any birth narrative. I mean, you know, if, if Jesus is, is born of a virgin, it wasn't either known or noteworthy for Mark. It's not a big, it's not a deal for Mark. Another piece of history, and I know this is tedious to kind of throw all this at you, but it's, it's almost certain that, that Mark's Gospel was written before 70 CE, common era, or we used to say AD, anno domini. And it's, it is certain that both Luke and Matthew and certainly John were written after 70 CE. Why is that important? Because in 70 CE, the, the whole temple is utterly and completely destroyed by, guess whom? The Romans, who have been working on building it all of Jesus' lifetime. In fact, it started with Herod the Great, who died in 4 BCE, or we would use to say BC. He started the, the great temple. It's a massive, massive structure. And even today, like, you know, Pastor Sarah, who's on this call and others of us who have been to Israel, you know, like where you have that wailing wall, you see these just monstrous stones that weigh 60 tons, 60 tons apiece. And you imagine that all of this is going into, into place for this huge, long temple that's like as long as a football field. I mean, it's, it is monstrous and it is ornate and it is beautiful and it's part of the old Pax Romana, the peace of Rome, that when you conquer someone, you build a big temple to their preferred deity or deities. And, and that's part of the way you control them, you know? It's, it's just like it's always been, you don't have to worry, you know? You can worship your God and we'll even help you build a wonderful temple to do that. But in 70, there's an uprising in Jerusalem that's been building and building and building by the zealots who want to overtake the Temple Mount, which they do for a time. And, but then they are utterly destroyed and thrown out and the whole temple is completely destroyed. And that was a huge signal. And it's pretty clear when you read Luke and Matthew that they know that the temple has been destroyed. But it's also clear, interestingly tonight, in Mark, and it has not been destroyed yet, that that's gonna happen. So, so that's a, an interesting piece there. Let's, let's look at the Gospel of Mark, the actual Gospel here this evening. And so this brings us to, we're, we're moving along in, in where we, where we are. So this, this certainly is something that we're quite familiar with because we read it every year on one of our big festivals, the triumphal entry into Jerusalem. What is that, remember? Of course, it is Palm, or what we now call Palm Passion Sunday. So they just healed Bartimaeus, now they were approaching Jerusalem, Beth-faj and Bethany, near the Mount of Olives. He sent two of his disciples, he said, go get, you'll find a cult that's never been ridden. That's symbolic, something that a king would do to ride a cult that has never been ridden. And when the people say, why are you doing this? Just say, the Lord needs it. Okay, now this is a huge thing that is now revealed just outside of Jerusalem. Peter has said, you're the Messiah, but Jesus never really calls himself that. But this is the one place in, in Mark's Gospel, and therefore ever, that Jesus does this. He calls himself the Lord, which is essentially in a Jewish world, God. I mean, tell them God needs it and send it back here immediately. They went away and found the cult and the bystanders indeed said, what are you doing? And they, they told him what Jesus said and they allowed them to take it and he brought it and they threw their cloaks on. So again, this entry into Jerusalem, but it mainly happens outside, in Mark's Gospel, outside of the walls. And they throw the branches and they shot Hosanna, which is, you would say at the procession of a king, it means save now, literally. Blessed is the one who comes in the name of the Lord. Blessed is the coming kingdom of our ancestor David, Hosanna in the highest heaven. Interesting, remember that, the coming kingdom of our ancestor David, because the prophecy and Luke makes a big deal about this, is that, you know, the, is that the Messiah will be of the house and lineage of David, with whom God made the covenant, that there would perpetually be one of his lineage on the throne in Jerusalem. So Jesus enters Jerusalem. Again, as far as we know and have reported, for the first time, all of his ministry has taken place far away from there. And remember, they sent scribes from Jerusalem and Pharisees from Jerusalem to spy on Jesus and ask him difficult questions to trap him. We do already know that. And immediately he goes into the temple and he looked around and he saw everything. You almost get the sense that it's almost touristy because it was, it was something to behold. He went out to Bethany with the 12, Bethany to the southeast of Jerusalem, about two miles, and that's where, where he hung out. So just, just a little bit of a point of reference here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, if I move it around here, but over here's the Mount of Olives. Jesus would have come from the north, but it doesn't matter because you always go up to Jerusalem because it's hills. The Mount of Olive is a big hill. Here is, here's the road that goes to Jericho and so on and so forth, and Bethany as well. So Jesus would have gone over here on the right of the screen, between the Mount of Olives and the Mount of offense. But you see just a lot of the different and interesting pieces here. So Herod's fortress would have been over on the left-hand side of the city or the, the southwestern side. But then the Temple Mount really was high up there and really quite huge. Does anybody know what's on the Temple Mount today? Right, a mosque, Dome of the Rock. That's a huge point of contention, is that there is now a mosque right there at the Dome of the Rock. So let's, so, so this is a really kind of a bizarre thing, particularly if you don't have the Old Testament memorized really, but there, there are a couple of Old Testament narratives about cursing the fig tree. On the following day, they came back from Bethany to Jerusalem. He was hungry and seeing in the distance a fig tree in leaf, he went to see whether perhaps he would find anything on it. When he came to it, he found nothing but leaves, for it was not the season for figs. And of course, we're all going, duh. I mean, you don't go, you don't go look for peaches on the tree in November. But, but he said to the fig tree, may no one ever eat from you again. And his disciples heard it. This is gonna be one of those inclusion things because we're gonna get the other side of the fig tree story, but something's gonna happen in between, kind of like remember the healing of Jairus's daughter? But in between, you get the woman with the flow of blood who touches Jesus's cloak and then they come back to Jairus's daughter. This is another one of those, Mark does that a lot. So now Jesus cleanses the temple. So, so he comes into Jerusalem and is, he knows that the scribes and the Pharisees and eventually the chief priests and the elders, the Sanhedrin, will be, they're looking for a way to get him, to trap him, to stop him, because he has so much of a following and it's threatening to their establishment and their understanding. He comes to the temple, he entered and began to drive out those who were selling and those who were buying in the temple. And he overturned the tables of the money changers and the seats of those who sold doves. And he would not allow anyone to carry anything through the temple. He was teaching and saying, is it not written, my house shall be called a house of prayer for all the nations, but you have made it a den of robbers? Of course, a lot is made here, you know, right now, contemporarily of protest and peaceful protest. This is not a peaceful protest. Jesus is destroying property. I'm also not advocating for that, but I'm telling you to keep that in mind, you know, that, you know, that, that, that Jesus is, is upset. I mean, he's, you think, okay, you, we're so conditioned by learning all of our little Sunday School songs and stories, that when you say scribes and Pharisees and Sadducees, that means bad, 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 Jesus good, scribes, Pharisees, Sadducees, bad, 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 that, that we just don't even, we gloss right over this. But I want you to imagine, you know, that you're selling tickets to your mother-daughter banquet in the Narthex, or whatever you have going on out there. And somebody comes in who maybe's never been there before and somebody that you already predisposed against and starts flipping tables over and throwing things and accusing people and calling them that they've turned, you know, God's house into a house of robbers, probably not gonna go real well in terms of welcome for that person in my congregation or yours. The chief priests and scribes heard it, they kept looking, and look at this, now it's not just to trap him, they're looking for a way to kill him, because they were afraid of him, Mark tells us. And why were they afraid of him? Because the whole crowd was spellbound by his teaching. That's our job, we're the professionals, we will tell you what's what, we will tell you who God is and the way your life is supposed to be in relationship to God, not this guy, don't listen to him. And if you do, well, we'll just kill him. And then Jesus and his disciples left. I, I wanted to just look a little bit at the temple here. Again, this, this is monstrous. This court of the Gentiles up in the upper left, this whole big area, that's just what that was. Gentiles could go into that area. This is also part of the court of the Gentiles and so would this part right down here in the front and even, you can't get to it around back. But then, in addition to that, you get the, the court of Israel, which is right out here, which you read to be men. The court of women, that means Jewish women can be here, but women cannot come in here at the threat of death. Then you get the holy place, which only the priests can go in. And in the very back of the holy place, you get the holy of holies, that only one priest can go in, how many times a year? One time. And they even had to tie a rope around their ankle, so that in case they died or they wouldn't come out, that they could pull them out, because nobody could go in to get them if they died. So that's, that's the place that we're talking about, it is quite a spectacle. Here's a, here's another sort of a view of it. This is a, a blow up of this middle part, the balustrade, you know? And this is the, you know, the holy place where the priests can go. This is the court of, of men, this is the court of women. And, and then the rest, you know, Gentiles could be there and it was very much like a marketplace. It was, it was a very high place, you could see all around from there. And it was a place where people went when you went to Jerusalem, even in a touristy kind of a way, if you weren't Jewish. And that's the way it was designed to be. And then underneath, there were all these passageways and so forth, many of which still exist and are being discovered. Okay, so now he, he does this thing and they're trying to kill him. I mean, the writing's on the wall. So in the morning, they passed by, they saw the fig tree withered away to its roots and Peter remembered and said, hey, look Rabbi, that fig tree that you cursed has withered. And Jesus said, have faith in God, truly I tell you. Or, you know, I know Gail at least from Star Town is on here and maybe others, but in Star Town, my first call, we always translated truly I tell you, as I tell you right now. That's the way we said it in Star Town. If, if you say this to the mountain, be taken up and thrown into the sea. And if you have not doubt in your heart, but believe what you say will come to pass, it will be done for you. So I tell you, whatever you ask for in prayer, believe you have received and it will be yours. So again, this is wisdom that in Luke and Matthew would be in the Sermon on the Mount or on the plain, but, you know, ask and it will be given, you know, knock and the door will be open and so, so forth. This is along those lines. And then there's also no Lord's Prayer in Mark's Gospel, but look what you get here. Whenever you stand praying, forgive if you have anything against anyone, so that your Father in heaven may also forgive you your trespasses. Does that sound familiar? Of course it does. So, you know, forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. So this whole fig tree thing becomes really symbolic, that the fig tree is a symbol for Israel and it is not producing fruit because it is not its season. And yet there's a word of gospel in this second part, because the fig tree has withered. But then, but Jesus says, yeah, but, but take heart, don't give up, because have faith in God. God can yet do something with a fig tree that has completely been withered. So, but the implication also is that, you know, the, the fruit will be born elsewhere other than among at least the establishment of the Jewish faith that finds him threatening. Now we're gonna get six in a row. We, we really don't have healing so much anymore, like Jesus did on the road and previously a lot. We're gonna get six interrogations of religious establishment people against Jesus. They, really, he's kind of on unofficial trial here. So again, they came to Jerusalem and as he was walking there, the chief priests and scribes and the elders came to him and said, hey, by what authority are you doing these things? Who gave you this authority to do them? Remember that way back when we were saying, hey, he casts out demons by Beelzebub? And we talked about, you know, Lord of the Flies, Lord of the Dung, Satan, all those things that Beelzebub, Beelzebub might mean and how it could be translated in a play on words. Jesus, in great rabbinical fashion, and this is something just to be aware of, even in personal relationships, if you haven't been aware before, and it's very much a biblical revelation as well as a psychological one. Whoever is asking the questions is asserting the power in the conversation. Whoever is answering the questions is surrendering the power. And so in the rabbinical method, rarely would someone simply give you an answer. They would either ask a question in response or they would tell you a story, which is why Jesus tells so many parables in the other Gospels. You know, you know, when the, when the lawyer stands up to trick him and says, huh, yeah, okay, right, love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind and strength, love your neighbor as yourself, but who's my neighbor? Huh, huh, who's my neighbor? And then Jesus doesn't say, you dummy, your neighbor's anybody who needs you. Instead, Jesus says, hey, there was this guy and he went down the road from Jerusalem to Jericho, you know, that really, really dangerous road where people robbed you all the time and like leave you for dead? Well, sure enough, and then he tells a story, right? The Good Samaritan. But here, Jesus says, no, look, you're asking me questions, I'm gonna ask you a question and you answer me and I'll tell you, you answer me and I'll tell you what authority I do these things. Remember how important in John's Gospel, in, in Mark's Gospel, we, we realize that John the Baptist is? He's a much bigger deal in Mark. And again, modern scholarship and archaeology in particular has really revealed to us in Jerusalem, that really the cult of John was huge and kept going after Jesus, life, death, resurrection. I mean, the cult of John was a big deal and it's been a big deal here in Mark's Gospel. So, so Jesus knows that and says, does the baptism of John come from heaven or human origin? And they argue with one another, hey, wait, if we say from heaven, he'll say, why don't you believe him then? But if we say human origin, they were afraid of the crowd, for all regarded, John is truly a prophet. And of course, Mark has already implied that, that John is the Elijah who has to come before Messiah comes. So they answered, Jesus, we don't know. And Jesus said to them, neither will I tell you by what authority I'm doing these things. So that's kind of the messianic sticking out of the tongue, if you will, and that nan, nan, boo boo. I'm not gonna play your games, Jesus says. So now Jesus tells a parable, and again, look, who is he talking to? These same people who are questioning him, he began to speak to them in parables. A man planted a vineyard, put a fence around it, dug a pit, built a watchtower, leased it to tenants, went away to another country. And, you know, when the harvest came, he says, he sent a slave to the tenants to collect them his share of the produce of the vineyard, but they seized him, beat him, sent him away empty-handed, and again with another, same thing, then another, and they killed this one, and they, and then many others they killed and beat. He's talking about the prophets people, this is very much analogy allegory. Verse six, he still had one other, a beloved son. Finally, he sent him to them. Hey, what did we learn way, way back at Jesus' baptism? But the reader, the reader learned it, but the audience didn't learn it because it was very personal. You are my son, the beloved. So this is the beloved son. What did we learn at the Transfiguration that was told to everybody? You know, this is my son, the beloved. So that I'm gonna send the son. And they said, who, here's the heir, let's kill this one, the inheritance will be ours. So what's the owner gonna do? He's gonna come and destroy the tenants and give the vineyard to others. Have you not read this in Scripture? The stone that the builders rejected has become the cornerstone. This was the Lord's doing, amazing in our eyes. And they're not dummies. When they realized that he had told this parable against them, you think, they wanted to arrest him, but they feared the crowd. So who does Jesus still have on his side? The crowd. So they left him and went away. Next, kind of interrogation. They sent to him some Pharisees, some Herodians to trap him in what he said. And they came and said to him, teacher, we know that you are sincere and show deference to no one, for you do not regard people with partiality, but teach the way of God in accordance with truth. I always tell our rostered ministers when they get a new call, beware of the people who come and say wonderful things about you the first month you're there, because they might be buttering you up. They probably are buttering you up. How's that for a cynical bishop? Is it lawful to pay taxes to the emperor or not? Now, the emperor was hated. The emperor claimed to be divine. You know, they felt like, you know, Judaism really alone in the ancient world was the monotheistic religion, and so how can you have an emperor who claims to be God? So it's a trick question for sure, but knowing their hypocrisy, he said to them, hey, look, it's a question, answering the question, why are you putting me to the test? Bring me a Daenerys object lesson, let me see it. And they brought one. And he said to them, whose head is this and whose title? And they said, the emperor's. Well, in fact, it would have said on there, Caesar Augustus, divine son of the, or it would actually say Tiberius Caesar. The, the divine son of Augustus Augustus, which, you know, is to say the, the Roman emperor's divinity. So Jesus said to them, give to the emperor then, the things that are the emperors, and to God, the things that are gods. And they were utterly amazed.
Bishop Tim, there's a question in the
Side, this particular passage, though in Matthew's version, which is almost identical to Mark's, is our gospel text assigned in the revised Common Lectureary for this coming Sunday? So you might be hearing something about this. And it often falls, it always falls sometime in October, and so you often get sort of a stewardship-y sermon about it because it's that time of year to talk about and the text really lends itself to him.
Bishop Tim, there's a question. Tell us who the Herodians are.
Okay, right, we, we heard about the Herodians, maybe the second week that we were here. The Herodians are Jews, but they're people who The Herodians are Jews, but they're people who sort of cooperate with the government and have decided that, look, let's not stir the pot. So they would sort of be the opposite of the zealots who want to run the Roman Empire off. They have, the Herodians have kind of come to accept that this is who, that this is the way that it is. And they're trying to sort of keep the peace as well. But they, in a sense, they've kind of sold out to the government. They were not real popular among the Jews. This is, by the way, a silver made out of real silver denarius from the time of Jesus. Where do you reckon I got this picture? It is for sale and it can be yours. It's a real denarius from Palestine. I think actually from Jerusalem. And it's what the, what it says, it's like Tiberius Caesar, son of the divine Augustus Augustus. It's from somewhere between 1437 during the lifetime of Jesus. And this would be the equivalent of one day's wage. We had the denarius before. Do you remember when the workers in the vineyard all got paid the same, including the ones who only worked an hour and the ones who worked for 12 hours? This is what they would get would be one denarius and that, that could feed a family of four to six people. Basically a day's wage. It was, it could feed and buy wood or whatever it is you needed to do to survive for a day. Now remember, one thing that was unique about the Pharisees that resonated with Jesus. And the Pharisees had for about 80 years before Jesus began to evolve into a sect of Judaism that proposed a resurrection of the dead, which had not been the case in Judaism prior to that. And certainly not during any of the writing of the Old Testament. The Sadducees and others were very much threatened by that whole proposal because they dealt in the law and they thought if there's a resurrection of the dead and there's something else to live for, why would you fulfill the law? And why would Messiah ever come? Which is what we're looking for as Jewish people. If, if we have a resurrection of the dead and if God's going to do something like that. So the Sadducees who don't believe in a resurrection, but, but Jesus and the Pharisees do, came and asked him a question saying, teacher, Moses wrote for us that if a man's brother dies, leaving a wife, but no child, he shall marry the widow and raise up children for his brother. That is absolutely true. It's called levirate marriage, L E V I R A T E. Levirate, yeah, marriage. And that, and why was that important, especially for Sadducees? There is eternal life in Judaism. And how does it happen? Not from some kind of life after death or resurrection, but through our children. And it is not my personal resurrection. It is the community's resurrection. So even if I am childless, I need to see to it that other Jewish people have children because that is our eternal life. That's why it's so critical. So it would have been considered really a terrible, terrible thing if a man died, leaving no children. Because at least in his contribution to that, he hasn't done his part for the eternal life of the Jewish faith. And so the rule and the mosaic law was you would marry, one of the brothers would have to marry the widow and take her as a wife, even if he already had a, a wife. Because you know, I always get tickled when people say, we are for biblical marriage. We want the biblical view of marriage bishop. And I'm like, oh, polygamy. Okay. Now we're talking. And they're like, no, not that. And I'm like, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said biblical. But folks, in both the New and the Old Testament, the standard of marriage was polygamy. Okay? So just saying. You know, it's, it's not as easy as people want to make it, but I digress. So, okay, so the Sadducees make this kind of silly thing up. So, okay, so seven brothers, the first married. When he died, he left no children. Second married and died, leaving no children. And the third, blah, 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 blah. Okay, we got you now because we read the scriptures and we know that when you, that when you marry somebody and when you have sex with somebody, you become one flesh with them. So, so whose wife will she be in the resurrection? And Jesus says, and I love the way that Jesus actually says this. And the Greek kind of has the sarcasm and snarkiness in it, the condescension. Is not this the reason you are wrong, that you know neither the scriptures nor the power of God? For when they rise from the dead, they neither marry nor are given in marriage, but are like angels in heaven. So what does that mean? Well, as important perhaps, and as much as we sort of stake the very being of the church on all these issues around sexuality, in the ultimate reality of all things, Jesus says, that's not like the deal, right? You know, Freud was maybe on to something, but maybe went way overboard. It's not all about sex. Like the angels in heaven is generally assumed to mean there's, you know, heaven is the perfect reconciliation of all relationships. And we don't need this marriage and we don't need this procreation. And we don't need all of these other things that marriage might entail. We don't need the protection of women from a patriarchal society. And essentially a celibate reality of heaven. Sorry if anybody else's view of heaven had been something otherwise. But at least at this point, that's where Jesus is. And as for the dead being raised, have you not read in the book of Moses and the story about the bush? How God said to him, I am the God of Abraham. Not I was. I am the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, the God of Jacob. God is the God, not of the dead, but of the living. And just for one more little zinger, he says, you are quite wrong. Now he's doing this in front of everybody, right? Sadducees are feeling pretty foolish. So now, yet another in this line of interrogation where they're trying to trap him, you know, make him fall into a pit, almost reminds you of a Supreme Court nominee, you know, hearing. One of the scribes came near and heard them disputing with one another and seeing the, and I can't read because it says, talking Bishop Tim Smith. They ask him, which commandment is the first of all? Jesus answered, the first is, and this is the ancient Shema, Deuteronomy six, which is like critical. I have it at my house. It is the essence of Judaism. It is the core of Judaism. And certainly after the exile, when we return with the Deuteronomist, you know, and so forth. It's what, when you see the little sideways, little rectangular thing called the mezusa, not the Medusa with the snaky hair, the mezusa. And inside the mezusa is the Shema. Here, oh, Israel, the Lord our God, the Lord is one. You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind and all your strength. The second is this, you shall love your neighbor as yourself. So Deuteronomy and Leviticus. There's no other commandment greater than these. So this, Jesus like nails it. That's a hundred. That is like a hundred on the quiz. The scribe, who at this point maybe is not so much trying to trick him, he's like, dang, you're, yeah, that's right, teacher. You've truly said that he is one and besides him, there is no other. Cause remember what distinguished Judaism, never underestimate this from every other ancient religion. Monotheistic, one God. So to say the Lord our God is one was a big deal. And, and so what does that mean? Just like, what does it mean to say Jesus is Messiah? It means that you love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind, strength. And that you love your neighbor as yourself. Love of neighbor is not something we invented for a poster to get out and vote. It is something that has been part of our tradition from the get go. That's what it's about. When Jesus saw that, the scribe now answered wisely, he said to him, you are not far from the kingdom of God. Interesting and ironic, isn't it? Because it's the scribes in Mark's Gospel, not the Pharisees so much who are really out to get him. And we know it from the get go. And he says to them, just like he says to some of the Gentile women, you are not far from the kingdom of God. You know, and, and to say, look, we've, kind of back to basics. We really agree on the basic stuff. Now let's get to what it means for us. And no one dared to ask him any question. So now you get, while Jesus was teaching in the temple, you know, the scribes say that Messiah is the son of David. And David himself, by the Holy Spirit declared, the Lord said to my Lord, sit at my right hand until I put your enemies under your feet. And David, verse 37, David himself calls him Lord. So how can he be his son? Remember that Gallagher guy who used to bust watermelons all the time, who just would drop little things that make you go, hmm. Why do you drive on the parkway and park on the driveway? Hmm. You know, Jesus says, look, and this is really interesting and it's really confusing because Luke and Matthew go to great pains to prove essentially that Jesus is in the lineage of David. But it seems like right here, and this is really confusing to biblical scholars, that, that Jesus is saying that, you know, why does the Lord have to come from David? Why does it have to be David's son? And again, remember Mark has made no deal about, you know, Joseph and the house and lineage of David and Bethlehem, the house of bread, you know, which, you know, all of that, that's not in Mark. That's, that's all later stuff that Luke shares with us. And look what it says, and the large crowd was listening to him with delight. You know, they didn't have Amazon and YouTube and Instagram and all these kinds of things. And this is like part of their entertainment and to sit around and listen to teachers and watch people debate, especially rabbis. You know, who could really say just about anything, but they're, they're just loving listening to Jesus. And now this scribe that has just come up to Jesus and said, and Jesus said, you're not far from the kingdom of God. Now look what he does. He picks his own fight. He doesn't wait for it to come to him. As he taught, he said, beware of the scribes. They like to walk around in long robes. By the way, in Matthew and Luke, it's the Pharisees, same passage, but Jesus says scribes. They like to walk around in their long robes and be greeted with respect in the marketplaces and have the best seats in the synagogues and places of honor at all the banquets. I'll tell you what they do. They devour widows' houses. You know, widows just made, just a pittance kind of living, if at all, they often begged. For the sake of appearance, these, these scribes say long prayers. They will receive the greater condemnation. I mean, he's in their face right now, but he knows what's going to be happening. I know I'm going fast, but we're getting close to where I can pause and reflect on some of this and look at some of the questions. The widow's offering, the widow's mite. I remember being so confused by that when I was a kid because I thought, the mid, the widow's might what? I didn't understand M I T E. I thought it was M I G H T. The widow's might. So the widow's offering, he sat down opposite the treasury and watched the crowd putting money into the treasury. Here's a good little announcement that when we're back together in our worshiping communities and we're passing offering plates again, assuming that day comes again, when, when that actually happens that way. How many of you clergy out there think you'd like to quote this particular part of scripture to say, and by the way, as you share your money, remember Jesus is watching you. It'd be a good stewardship program. I don't know, maybe not. A poor widow came and put in two small copper coins which are worth a penny. And the Romans called it a quadrus. You remember the denarius, which was a day's wage? The quadrus or the penny that is translated here would be one sixty-fourth of a denarius. You couldn't even begin to buy really anything to eat much with it. One sixty-fourth of a day's wage. And she put in two of those, so one thirty-second of a day's wage, but it was everything she had. And he says, this poor widow has put more than all those who are contributing to the treasury. When we talk about proportionate giving in the life of the church, it's not a business model. Okay? It's a scriptural sort of reference that it's a matter, I mean, it's about, it's about percentages. It's about as we are able, as we are entrusted with, with more. She out of her poverty has put in everything she had, all she had to live on. Literally in Greek, she put in everything she had her whole life. She put her whole life in there. So I have left a little bit of time and I don't know how else to get through this with this number of people other than to, to do it that way. But I'm going to look a little bit at the chat bar and see, Tammy, if you saw something that.
There's a question about the, in John, he made a whip of cords when he cleansed. Where might that have come from?
Where the whip of cords would have come from? Just in the same way that you would make a whip to, to drive sheep or oxen or something like that. Because, and you would also, often on the, on the end of the whip, and it would be similar to the whip with which Jesus was given the, the lashing, you know, when he was tried before Pilate. We'll read about that next week, I guess. And they would put chips of pottery and bone that were sharp in there so that when, and same thing with, with an ox, because it's got such a thick hide that, you know, it's not, it's just going to be annoyed if you're smacking it with a piece of leather. But if you put little chips and bone and things in it. So, so it would have been the same thing you would make to whip an animal, you know, that kind of thing. Or to use as a weapon. Sometimes they were used as weapons in, in a battle. Marriage can be open today for some, so polygamy is sort of making a comeback. Well, I'm not sure it ever went away, if you're going to put it in that arena. And, and, and I would not call, I mean, marriage is kind of an interesting discussion all the way around. Because in the Old Testament, I mean, biblically, there were interesting ways to be married. Including, one of the ways that people got married was they had sex with each other. And that's the way they got married. And, and there wasn't any necessarily ritual or celebration or anything like that. But probably the purest biblical view of marriage was a lifelong commitment of fidelity to another person. So, so technically such people are married. But, but marriage is also something that the state and the church or the religious realm adapted as well. So marriage becomes the public expression and accountability of a personal relationship in part because of our sinfulness. One of the reasons we get married is because if we're going to be particularly, and particularly in a patriarchy where a woman on her own has little chance to survive or even thrive. It actually, as, as much as it seems in many ways to be an abusive or neglectful thing of women, it's a way to protect women, kind of like Jesus was talking about with divorce last week or the week before. No, you can't just divorce somebody and leave them because you think somebody cuter comes along. Anyway, we could spend a lot of time sort of on theology of marriage. Yeah. Who is your neighbor? Yeah. Well, and that's the, that's the question that Luke really answers with, with, with a question that Jesus asked, you know, here, here came the priest, here came the Levite. And oh yeah, they'll help. No, they didn't. Cause they don't want to be ritually unclean. But then the Samaritan, oh no, not the Samaritan. We hate Samaritans. The Samaritan helps the man pours, you know, wine on the wounds, takes him to an inn, puts him in there. Says, hey, I'll be back when I come back through and I'll pay you the rest of what you need, but take care of this guy. And then Jesus simply says, now you, okay, now you tell me who's the neighbor? Say the one who helped him. So, so who is your neighbor? Your neighbor is the one who helps you and the one whom you help. In the, in the biblical sense, not the person who lives next door to you or who looks like you or me or whatever. Is there any correlation between a withered fig tree cursed by Jesus to the fig tree whose leaves Adam and Eve covered their sinfulness? I, I had not thought so. And I didn't read that in, in the two commentaries that I looked at. But you know, figs were very, very, very common. that I looked at. But, you know, figs were very, very, very common. And so, so it would be just a really common sort of thing. And they, and they have big leaves. So the, the whole sense of the fig tree, the fig tree was seen as a, as a sign of prosperity, as a sign of plenty, kind of like you see pineapples of hospitality when you go to Williamsburg, you know, in colonial America, pineapple was a symbol of wealth and hospitality. "Love does no harm to a neighbor, 1310 in Romans." Yep, good point. So, "People are looking for alternatives to what state and church want. Marriage to life as to lifelong commitment still worth something, it seems. Eight years is average duration now, unfortunately." Hmm. I don't know about that statistic. I do know that people are getting married a lot later now than they once did. In my parents' generation, the average age of marriage for a woman was 19. And the average age of marriage for a man was 20. Now, it's almost 29 for a man and 27 and a half for a woman, I believe it is. But the reality is, part of that is because a lot of people don't ever get married at all, because they, they feel like the, that it's hypocritical and so forth. But again, I don't want to make too much about marriage tonight, because really, when you look at chapters 11, and it might have peaked some, some, some curious sidebars for us. But, but, but really, chapters 11 and 12 are about this interrogation of Jesus and catching him in something, but the utter inability of all the religious establishment and the very learned people, the, not just the Nazareth synagogue, you know, Jews and teachers and rabbis, but, but the Jerusalem temple folks. They cannot trip him up. And the crowds, at least for now, are really, really with Jesus. We also know that they're trying to kill, kill Jesus, that that's just a part of what is, you know, what's, what's going on. Ben Cray, Pastor Cray says, can I say a little bit about, more about, yeah, I've got him really worried now because he thought, he heard me say that heaven is celibate. It's like the old Roman Catholic joke about, you know, the pope comes downstairs and is just weeping after he comes up from the bowels of the Vatican library. And he says, "It was a mistranslation. It was never celibate. It was celebrate." And, so, but, yeah. An angel would have been thought to be, to be celibate. And that that was not a part of the essence of interaction in the fullness of, of relationship. Of course, Jewish people saw marriage and sex largely in a procreation sort of a way, with the pleasure part as one aside of it, just to get your attention. So, just to give you the idea and the incentive, so that we could procreate. Not so different from the way the Catholic Church really saw that. But it's not, it's not all about that sexuality, even though that's very real and very much a part of who we are as human beings, as creatures, right? Just as creatures. I mean, there's an old song about that, right? "Birds do it, even educated fleas do it." Yeah. Yeah, well, Tammy's laughing, but, yeah. The heavenly bodies that had sex with humans in Genesis. Yeah. And, and that was part of their sin as well. And that's where you get those Nephilim or those giants that come around. Read the first, like, eight chapters of Genesis. It'll like blow your mind if you like really look at what, there were, there were like angels that came and had sex with human women. And then there were, that's why there's giants. So there's a lot of mythology, and I don't mean to say to you that that's not true. I mean that it's a reflection in a literary way of why the world is the way that it is. And so much of the biblical narrative, particularly the Old Testament, I believe, was written in that reflective sort of a way. So, yeah. So, yeah, you bring up marriage and sex, and that's what people want to talk about, right? Well, we might as well talk about it. It's what we fight about, right? So, you know, and whether or not we can stay together as the church about, you know, whether we're going to marry. Your mom just turned 90 and married her 92-year-old partner. They're friends, partners and lovers in the real sense. Yep. Yep. By that time, you probably know what you want and what you need and who you are. And if you don't, yep. We have two weeks left, and I think you know where this story is going. This passion piece, which is really not so terribly far away now from Advent. It's a strange time of year now to be looking at this and studying this, but it is really the core of Mark's Gospel and all the Gospels. Remember, passion or suffering narrative with extended introduction. Next week is going to be weird, and I'll warn you. When you read chapter 13, it is an apocalypse. It is the apocalypse of Mark, which has to do with the end times. So you get, think of the second half of Daniel, think of parts of Ezekiel where you see visions. Think about the book of Revelation, which is called actually the apocalypse to John, or, you know, the, the revelation to John, the apocalypse of John. So, this apocalyptic literature is, is fascinating. But, but Jesus puts this, or Mark puts this teaching of Jesus in chapter 13, which is a lot of our Advent readings. So it'll be very different and kind of weird. So as you read it, just get through it. And we'll talk about why that is and what that is in more detail next week. How long was Jesus in Jerusalem before the passion? Well, in Mark's Gospel, not long at all. Just a few days. In John's Gospel, he starts off in Jerusalem, everything you hear. So, anyway, it's time for us to go. So God bless you and protect you from disease and difficulty. And I'm going to tell you, because there's a lot of, if you turn on your TV, or if you do a lot of things, you can find a lot of bad news. And like I say, my little simplistic spirituality self says it has a lot to do with where you're putting your focus. So you can choose to focus somewhere. And I'll bet if you look around, you can see something beautiful. And if you think about it, and if you pay attention, you will experience something beautiful. And you can be something beautiful for somebody else. And, and I think that in really simplistic terms, as I get older and older, I think I kind of knew that in kindergarten. And now I'm kind of coming back to that's what we need to be about. So, anyway, peace to you and hope we get to see you next week. And if not, Tammy did record it, and somebody next week will record. You can catch up with it, okay? Good night.